Call the school committee meeting to order March 6, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Mr. Stevens, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republicans who wage his stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No executive session at this time. School committee members and student reports. School committee chair, nothing at this time. Resource committee.
Resource, we'll have it for the next meeting.
Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, school building needs.
Same for the next meeting, we will have it.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. Policy subcommittee, Mr. Horgan, what timing?
Hey. Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none? Yes. Ms. Reynolds.
Well, I would like to know when there will be a policy meeting.
Very soon, very soon. We're scheduling that. I've been scheduling that with the superintendent's office. That's on me. Sorry, Rosemary. Spent quite some time.
I didn't get to finish yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I know there are lots of things to discuss in the policy meeting. So you do think there'd be one soon?
Very soon.
Very soon. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, student support subcommittee, Dr. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report at this time. There will be a meeting coming up soon. You know, we just talked about it. Nothing to report.
Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Personnel subcommittee, I have nothing to report at this time. And nor for executive committee. Our student reps.
Today was a professional development day.
Okay, professional development day. Fine, thank you. Approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of February 27, 2023. Make a motion to approve. Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is unanimous. Thank you. Public comment. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Yes. Ms. Craigin, go to the center. Rashtrum, cite your name, serial number, birth date.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Sally Craigin. I live at Oak Hill Road, Fitchburg. This is Spencer. He is a therapy cat, and we're actually here to speak on behalf of the after-school programs. I am so happy to see the after-school programs on the budget, and I wanted to let you know that the B-positive therapy pets for the last couple of weeks, we spent, we had two sessions over at Crocker with children. One was a photography class with Debbie Jeffries, and it was fabulous to see children visiting the dog, visiting the rabbit, visiting Spencer, and just really relaxing with the pets. So we also visited, I'm sorry, Spencer, do you want to? He may, he may need to say something, but you won't be able to hear it.
As long as he cites his address, we're outside.
Oh, we live, we live together.
We do. Oh, good.
We do. Yes, this is my personal cat. So I just, I reflect every, every other week on school committee, and more often than you guys might think, about how wonderful it is to see COVID in the rearview and to see kids enjoying their time in our classrooms and the caring, brilliant teaching that I get to see from basically the sliver that we see when we come to after-school programming. So we will be at McKay. I, they've already reached out to us and asked us for a weekly commitment, so we're figuring out the day. And it's exciting. Again, Fitchburg Public Schools is the leader for therapy pets in the classrooms in the state of Massachusetts. So I really want to commend the school committee and the administration for having vision and really seeing what kids need the most, which is caring teachers and which is a lot of positive experiences in their school day. And I think, hold on. He asked if any of you have cat treats. I take it, let's a no.
I don't.
No, you know cat treats today?
Should have taken them. My God. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Other public comments? Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Please identify yourself. There isn't anyone zooming in, I take it. Thank you. Yes.
Just before we move on, I'd just like to recognize that we have Mr. William Gates with us tonight, our former school committee member.
Yeah.
Thank you for attending.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Reynolds.
I would like to make a comment.
Yeah.
I did ask that a certain item be put on the agenda to discuss tonight, and which I understood was the correct way to go about it, but I was told that it wouldn't be on the agenda. So I'm hoping that it'll be on the next meeting that we have, and that's a response to something that was handed out to all of us, or given to all of us, from one of the city residents that is deeply concerned about, well, not many, many, many things, but I would say primarily at the root of it, not, not listened to, speaking on behalf of many, many people who are, feel that they're not listened to. Thank you. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. I can assure you that there will be an opportunity to present your, your case, if you will. Thank you. Anyone else wishing public comment? Comment from the, from the committee? Seeing none, superintendent's report, Mr. Jokela.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have actually a few items underneath my report. The first one is a collaboration that Fitchburg Public Schools, Fitchburg High School, and Goodrich Academy have been working on putting together a program for juniors and seniors to participate in some after-dark programming at Monty Tech Regional Vocational Technical High School. Tonight with us is Superintendent Tom Brown of, I'll say Monty Tech for brevity, and tonight we'll give a summary of where, what the, what the after-dark program is, talk a little bit about the, how it will be expanded, and next steps in terms of the application process with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, Mr. Brown, if you want to join us?
Thanks so much, Superintendent Jokela. I'm thrilled to be here. I'm gonna just kind of assist as we go through the, the procedure here and through the process, and I think, just to let everybody know, I do truly feel that this is a groundbreaking effort that's going to be happening between these four school districts, something that we can be very proud of, that will become a model, hopefully, through the state, and the willingness of Fitchburg Public Schools to, to support and jump into this has just been fantastic, and we're thrilled to, to be a part of it.
So I'll, I'll let you get started, Tom, and talk a little bit about the program. You know, you have the slides and, but.
Sure. Just a little view. So what we have been, or what we proposed for a long time, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has been looking for, and I'm sure you've heard that the, the number of seats available for, for students to access vocational education just isn't enough. Monty Tech alone, this past year, we had 850 students apply for 370 positions across the district. So the, the state DESI has been asking vocational schools to consider something what they've called an after-dark program. And what an after-dark program typically is, is regional vocational school and the comprehensive high schools that feed into that. At the end of the day, obviously, when our students leave in the late afternoon and evening, it's, there's, the shops are open. We do have continuing education, but not necessarily all our shops have programs that happen at night. So the endeavor for, for DESI is that we open up these programs so students who remain enrolled in their, their sending district have an opportunity to access this vocational program. What we're doing is we're putting a little spin on it. What was made available to vocational schools was a lab modernization grant, and without going into that immediately right now, it was allow you to access and, and update a program, but to do that for us, you'd have to shut down the program. So what we looked at was, instead of doing that, because while you had shut down the program, so you could do all the renovations, what we decided to do was look down the street, found a facility at 270 Westminster Street that would allow us to create a couple shop spaces for three different programs. Immediately, just so you know, the two programs that we're immediately starting with are going to be electrical and house carpentry. The third program, which will be down the road, will be a plumbing program, and I know Bob has some great stats that show why it's, it's good to choose those programs. But when we even started these discussions, this goes back many years, pre-COVID, meeting with Jeremy and, and, and Dr. Jokela, we realized, and they said to us, listen, Tom, our kids can't come immediately after school. They have their extracurricular activities, many of them have after-school jobs that the families rely on. We just can't do this. How can we get this type of program started? So the risk that we're taking is we're saying, let's do it during the school day. What will happen is, and this is a particular after-dark program, is the students will alternating weeks. One week they'll come down to the program at 270 Westminster Street, they'll get their vocational training. On the opposite week, they'll get their academic training, and that's going to happen at Fitchburg High School. Those students remain at Fitchburg High School, and I'll let Mr. Jokela explain, you know, why that's significant and important. But that's, that's the essential idea of an after-dark program that we're trying to put in place, hoping to start this program in the fall of '24. That's just a quick entry of what a after-dark program is.
Okay, so I think the next couple of slides here, really just are snapshots of Fitchburg High School and Goodrich Academy, and really, you know, this program is an opportunity for our students to have access to vocational programming, in looking at the diversity of our student population at Fitchburg High and at Goodrich. The, the student population is respectively 75% students of color at Fitchburg High and 63% at Goodrich. And then also in the next two slides, looking at the post-graduation plans, those entering the career field right out of Fitchburg High School are 27%, and out of Goodrich are 79%. So we have a number of students who's, whose goal is to go into the workforce, and one of the things that we've talked about for years is making sure our students get, go into careers that are well-paying careers, have good benefits, and they learn a skill. And the two programs that we're going to, that are the two initial programs for the after-dark program are, fit that criteria. So I'll, I'll let Mr. Brown talk a little bit about not only the students from Fitchburg, but there are two other districts in the North County who are potentially participating in this after-dark program, Gardner and Eric Gansit. So, Mr. Brown, I don't know if you want to just kind of go over the breakout of how you came up with the numbers.
Absolutely. So the numbers that we decided, we basically did the breakdown the way that typically we're required to do, where we took the number of students, we started off saying that we were going to have 40 juniors, 40 seniors, it's only for upperclassmen, and we would break, break down those 40 students based on, the, with the way we do it, is its total enrolled, or students, Elbow for schooling in the districts, and you do the percentage. So basically, if you take the percentage of Fitchburg students out of all those, the percentage of Gardner students, and the percentage of, of Eric Gansit students, it, we applied that to the 40 students, and that's where we came. What we did just recently, because I know you're going to say, well, it's adding up to more than that, is we added, the way it was working out for Fitchburg was they had 12 and 1 for one program and 13 in the other, it wasn't even a number, so we decided to add. So actually, what it does come down to is basically, we now are looking at a total of 84 students in the program, and that's how we kind of balanced it out, basically, between those three districts. Those districts were mostly chosen because they do have the most students that were on the waitlist, so we wanted to make sure they were accessing those, those students.
So, Tom, you still running your normal programs during the day, electrical, carpentry?
Correct, yep.
All right, these are for kids who can't, who need that?
It's, it's, so the, 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 the best part of it, one of the best parts of it is, it's kids, how whoever, all, both those, all three of those districts, they choose how they want to choose those students. They can pick any student they want to bring. There's no applic, well, there's an application process, but there's, there's not the traditional application process that, that would do to get into Monty Tech.
Thank you.
Quick question?
Yes, sir.
Could you go back to the previous slide?
I was going to say, explain it for those watching, but you need to explain it for me. EL, HC, could you tell me what those?
EL is electrical, HC is house carpentry.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep, no worries. Sorry about that.
And, I mean, these are, or in terms of detail, the next couple of slides, but.
Yeah, I mean, this kind of breaks it down, basically, but some of the key things that, you know, we want to know, okay, these students are only going to get two years of training. What, you know, what will that get them if they only do these two years of training? One is, when they complete the program, they will have a vocational certificate. The most important that, part of that is hours. They should end up with about, I think it's 1,050 hours with the system that we're going to have. If you don't know, for an electrician's license, it's all about how many hours you have in training. So to have those hours and have it identified on a certificate allows them then, if they want to, to transfer into the, there is a program called CTI, which is Career Technical Initiative, which is a state program for adult workforce, and students can transfer right in. That's tuition-free if they get into that program, so even though they're only going to do the two years with us, they could potentially transfer right into a tuition-free program as well, called CTI. So they're going to end up with those. The credentials are very important, they'll, they'll end up with their OSHA-10, which is the basic safety certificate that, that, that they need to kind of get going in their trade. We're hoping, and also in-house carpentry, that they'll do fall protection in terms of harnesses and everything else, hot works, which is, involves very basic kind of welding techniques and everything else. But they will, they will come out with some of these special credentials, these workforce credentials, that they can apply to their applications immediately as they go in. What we're hoping to do, that last row there about pre-apprenticeship, is we're going to be reaching out to some of the apprenticeship programs and see, can we make a connection that our kids can walk right in and get into those pre-apprenticeship programs, which again, if you know anything about the trades, getting into, into those pre-apprenticeship programs allows them a big foot up and, in into the trade. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll switch to the next one.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. Regional labor market data, so this is what we used when we were trying to consider what programs we, we might want to get in. I mean, I think everybody knows that all the construction trades are desperately looking for replacement. The folks who are, a lot of the folks who are in these trades are late 50s, early 60s, and they've hit their retirement age, and, and they're going away. I'm sure many of you have tried calling for a contractor to see if you can come in, and they're, and they're not there. So we, we had a sense from the get-go that these are trades, electrical, house carpentry, and then eventually plumbing, that will definitely have opportunity to get jobs. So this is some of the regional labor market data. We made, make a lot of these decisions with direct connections through MassHire, which is a group based in Leavenster, but really, they, they work with trying to identify ways to, to build on the workforce and everything else. So as you can see, there are definitely going to be opportunities down the road for these folks immediately, you know, upon completion of the program. And again, if they then continue on, house, house carpentry kids will be able to go right out and work on a, on a house job or anything like that. Electricians are going to want to keep getting those hours, so they're going to want to switch kind of, and do both. What a lot of those folks do is they work during the day, and then they take the program at night. It's a fantastic opportunity, but you can see, there are definitely going to be jobs for these folks upon completion. And they're going to get paid well.
And, and as Mr. Brown just mentioned, MassHire North Central Workforce Investment Board has put together some projections based on statistical data analysis, and this is required as we submit the, the application to the Department of Ed. And really, just looking at the median salary for each field, the growth rate for the next, well, although I guess 21 has already passed, but as we can just see, and as Mr. Brown said, the economy remains strong for the trades. And, you know, MassHire has this racial diversity local, for local versus national average, and basically, those numbers show that the diversity in those trades is not as high as the national average. Is that fair commentary?
Yes, yes.
And that, based on the data for North Central Mass, the people of color in those two trades are 22% for carpentry and 12% for electrical. And I guess, just trying to connect the dots to some of the data of Fitchburg High School and Goodrich Academy, we're trying to provide opportunities for all our students. So if, if they were not, you know, able to get entry into Monty Tech when they're freshmen, this is another opportunity, because we have a number of students who want to go into the trades, whose families are in trades, and this will give them the training, experience, and hours to help them on their path.
Yep, and, and we are building this program, again, the, all, the four districts working together, specifically making sure that any student with IEP needs, EL needs, or anything like that, are going to have those supports in place within the, the facility, so.
I have a question regarding the last slide, just before it switched. You can, what is, how do you interpret that, that racial diversity, local, national average? What do you, what do those numbers under that mean?
So it's, it's basically the numbers that they look at that compare, so to the left would be what the, the, the number of folks at, in, that fall into that category, at the local number, as opposed to the number on the right, which is the national. So it's a little bit lower than the national average, but I mean, I think that's kind of understandable.
I still don't, I'm sorry that I, I might be a little dense. I still don't understand what you mean.
It's literally a count of how many people within that category are working in the generally regional area, which is.
Oh, so if you're saying that first line, it's hard to read. Was it four?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, yes, the 477 and the 773, correct. That is the actual count.
Class 773, yes. So what does that mean, again?
So again, what it is, is the number to the right is the national average, number of folks per, I think it's per 1,000, and then to the left.
Number of, I'm sorry, number of folks.
Number of workers. How's that? Number of workers.
Workers per 1,000.
Yep, per 1,000, and then to the left is the local number.
In that, in that.
Correct, in that trade.
But how does that refer to racial diversity? Or is it, are you considering?
Specifically, for people who fall within that category.
Oh.
Who are, who are non-white. How's that? It's those workers who are non-white.
But I think white should be in the racial diversity too. And we.
Yeah.
And we, eventually, I'd like to see.
Yes, yeah.
Everybody included.
Sure. Yep.
No one excluded.
Yep, I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, so here we are, March 6. Mr. Brown, I don't know if you want to go back to.
I will not go through every single item. I'll, I'll let you take a look at that.
But maybe, you know, the, the work that, well, all four districts have done over the last several months, in terms of the conversations, the collaborations, to get to this point, and really, as you mentioned, the lab modernization grant, that I think was about 1.8 million dollars.
Correct.
We're in the midst of a planning grant now. I think that was 25,000, right?
15,000 for each program, so 30,000 total, yeah.
And by, I think it's Thursday, we need to approve the memorandum of understanding, which all three districts are, I think, in the final stages of viewing and tweaking, and then submit it to DESI, and I think we just have a couple other letters to sign. I think we have one that the mayor has to sign as chair of the school committee, to make sure we submit, and we hit the send button on, on Friday.
That's the, that's the plan, absolutely. Yeah, I should, you know, so the, that we did secure the lease with 270 Westminster, so that's all set. The big part about the lab modernization grant is 30% of that 1.8 million could go directly to the renovation. Our students will do the renovations inside the building, hopefully get started on some of that work this spring, and then do the bulk of the work in the fall. We're currently working, a lot of our house carpentry kids, who will do some of that work, are working on a Habitat for Humanity home in, in Fitchburg right now, so we kind of split. But they'll do that, that work, the rest of that money will go to purchase all the equipment that goes inside it. So that, that, that grant piece was a huge piece, securing the building was a huge piece, and the, I should say that Laramo Pagano and Associates, which is an architectural firm out of Worcester, who have done a ton of school projects across the state, they're fantastic. They helped us with our veterinary clinic, four years ago now, five years ago, actually, more than that. They've, they actually were willing to come onto the program and actually did a real nice job of giving us a very affordable price to do the design, so they're currently in the process of working on that design, to be, to be, to come on that design work, like, and as Mr. Jokela said, now we're just down to filing the paperwork and hopefully getting
I think, I don't know if you want to just maybe quickly.
Yeah, the last part is, yeah, we've done the first two, and Mr. Jokela just mentioned the first two. The last part is, as we get closer to actually opening, there'll be another implementation grant, which again, could, could be significant money that would help us, so this is what we're hoping to, to get that implementation grant. Again, the, the first year that we actually open up, so in 2024, we will be doing the continuing, sorry, the CTI program at night this time next year, hopefully, to get it started. Obviously, we're not going to have the building ready, so we don't want to start the students, so they would only get a, just one semester. So we'll, we'll open up year two, will be the fall of 2024, and go through the, the rest of that. When it talks about sources of money, the implementation grant, you have our explaining, continuing ed and CTI, again, that's money that comes from the state to support those adult workforce programs, and also, we, we do have funds for our continuing education. Perkins money refers to Perkins Grants, our money that DESI, DESI gives. It's actually a federal grant that goes through DESI that basically supports vocational education. That will be another source of, of funding this. And then the last major source, I think is on one more slide after that, well, if, if is, oh, there it is, up top, student assessments. So each vocational student in Massachusetts, a, a, a group of money, that's called Chapter 74 funds, follows that student as long as they're in a Chapter 74 program. So all these students will formally be in Chapter 74 program, so that money will follow them. That money will be used to help run the program, but that is above and beyond the Chapter 70 money. So local Chapter 70 money that Fitchburg has always had, we will not be tapping into any of that money. I want to make sure that everyone knows that. This is specifically going to be new Chapter 74 money that would be going because the students are enrolled in a vocational program. Just want to make sure that everybody understands that local funds that you're used to get to, that you're used to getting in chapters is not going to be touched, we're not going to be accessing that. And it goes the same for, for Monty Tech, is that we're going to make sure that none of our, that's why we're using continuing education and the student assessments and everything, so it won't act, access our local funds, because right now, we've only been able to involve three, three of our districts. So we want to make sure that we're letting those folks know that if your district is not involved in this, you're not paying any extra money either, so.
Questions occurred to me. Will this require you hiring many new teachers?
No, we'll, we'll need a couple instructors for each program. We're going to have to get some paraprofessionals. Again, we want to make sure we're supporting any student that comes into that program if they have an IP or anything like that, but we'll be using those funds that I just listed up there to, to help pay for those.
And when you come to the week of academic week, these students from the various areas, they'll return to their local high school for the academic week?
Yes, I'll yield to Mr. Jokela.
Well, at Fitchburg, yes, but the others as well?
Same as well, correct, yep.
And will there be coordination of teaching material between those different schools?
So one of the things is that each district will be maintaining their own individual graduation requirements and everything else, so I can't necessarily speak to that, but I would say that, so there won't necessarily be coordination between those three, three schools in terms of what academics they're doing, because each school already has different requirements for, for, for those academic students, so.
So when they graduate, though they're, they're satisfying each individual high school that they attend, it will be a degree from Monty Tech?
No, nope. They, they are enrolled in Fitchburg High School. That's, again, that's, that's one of the beauties of this, is the students remain in Fitchburg. They'll get a certificate that will say, from, from the vocational piece, but their actual diploma will still be from Fitchburg Public Schools.
Oh, so they don't enter into the numerical requirements that.
Not at all. Not, not for Monty Tech, it's pure.
They remain students on, on our enrollment.
And yet, you maintain the, the proportions that Monty Tech requires, or that, that is required for attracting from each, you know, the different schools.
We just use that as a formula to break down the students, the 40 students that were being assigned, that the, the, oh, if you're, if you're thinking about, again, this will have, so it'll be, it's still going to be two completely separate pathways. The application process for the incoming freshman from Monty Tech is one application process, and then this will be a completely separate process, where each district decides what their application and acceptance process is.
Well, I mean, you did show a slide originally, I believe, where you said so many students come from Pittsburgh and wherever the other schools. And so I'm just saying with clarity, is that same proportion? And I, I understand that's dependent, that's set proportional, Pittsburgh and whatever. And there's always difficulty over there, but with this new development, and you intend to accept 40 students total.
Yep.
The, it's still, will maintain the same proportions as, as what you require for Inter Monty Tech?
It's the same process. It's not the same proportion because in this case, we're only talking about three districts. And obviously, in the other process, when we do the math, it's, it's 18 cities and towns.
But what will you be using so that, so that the school, cities are?
Basically, you take all school-aged children. So you take all the school-aged children, so that's K through 12 in all, Pittsburgh, and Gardner, and in Narragansett. You compile them all. So let's, I'll just say as a magic number, let's say there's 1,000 students. There's obviously way more than 1,000 students.
Yes, we.
You then look and you see, okay, what percentage of those 1,000 students are from, I'll say Narragansett. Let's say 250 of them are from Narragansett. That means Narragansett will get 1/4 of those 40 students. If Pittsburgh then has 50% of those students, they'll get 20 of those 40 students. So that's the math process, how it was decided.
Basically, the same, even though it's a fewer.
It's the same process. It's not the exact same numbers, obviously, but the same process, yes.
Same process, but also the same numbers proportionately.
I guess, yes, sort of, yes.
Because it's got to be right or close to right because people will be upset, you know?
Yeah, no, as you, as you see, I mean, obviously, it wasn't surprising that Pittsburgh has a lot more students than those other two districts. So that's why Pittsburgh gets a much larger piece of those, those 40 students. Yes, ma'am.
Superintendent Tom, I remember from a long time ago, the way you had the program set about Monty Tech, as you know, you've been mentioning, that one week the students go through their academics, remember that? And the other week, they go to their shops. Now, the diploma or the certificate that the students are going to get, I'm not sure if it's going to say vocational, the students from Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh students deserve the best, by the way. So what I'm looking at is, I remember when I was there, it required four years of the students to be in the shop, four years in the academics. So the way how it's going to be changed, turned over now, that it's only going to be two years of the shop, these diplomas or certificates that the students are going to get, are they going to be powerful enough so that they can get the jobs that you mentioned that are out there? Because I'm just wondering, you know, since, or, or maybe the students are going to be going to their academics a longer period of time during the day, well, not in the shop, actually, so that they can get all the information? Because if at Monty Tech, the students are going into the shop for, for four years, and this program is only for two, I'm just, just concerned if the students are going to get these certificates, that's going to be, you know, when they go to apply for the jobs, you know, they're going to say, yes, you can get a job, you have enough, or no, yours was only two years instead of four years.
Yep. Yeah, so the answer is, they will not be obviously the exact same number, because again, it's usually about hours, more, more than it is about years. And they're not going to have the same amount of hours as, as a student who spent their full, full years at Monty Tech. Keeping in mind, that's technically not balanced because they don't go into their shop until halfway through their freshman year. So they're going to be missing about a year and a half of, of training. That being said, the freshman year training is a lot of the safety programs and everything else, getting their OSHA 10 and everything else, that they're going to be doing in this program as well. So will they have all the same skills of a student that's graduating? Not necessarily. Will they have skills and will they be able to demonstrate workforce credentials that can get them a good job? Absolutely, 100%. The electricians, again, because it's much more hours, they're going to have to find, you know, another adult program in order, if they're looking to continue in the trade and get promotions and everything else. But there's a lot of those programs, and again, I cannot say enough about the Career Technical Initiative Program, the nighttime program. Again, it's free tuition. If you get into it, it's covered by, the, the CTI program really takes into account that these folks who are underemployed and unemployed need additional supports. So, you know, transportation, if they lose their, their car breaks down, and they need supports for that. There's actually money involved in CTI to help that student get their car fixed so they can still continue in the, the trade and everything else. So we would be encouraging strongly for any of the students, especially those electrical students, to continue on and do that CTI program.
And eventually, will it be a four-year program? Is this just introductory, that it's a two?
No, I, I would assume because the space that we're going to have, it'd be difficult. I can't say no because, you know, one of the things is, you know, as we've been going around and sharing this information with the other towns and making sure they understand that, you know, it's, right now, it's just these three districts and everything else. If this goes well, which I'm confident it will, I could see us trying to expand and try to do other shops in other spaces and everything else. When we started looking for spaces, a lot of the other towns were, were giving examples of schools that they may have closed or something like that. They could, that maybe we could put a different shop program in there. So we'll be looking to expand sometime.
May I be the angel's advocate, not the devil? Angel's advocate. I'm just, I'm just concerned. I mean, it, it sounds nice. I just don't want, the students in Pittsburgh I'm going to talk about, I mean, nobody. I don't want a parent to send, you know, allow their child to sign up in a program, and then when the child graduates, they can't get a job, they can't get into college because they don't have enough credit, or they cannot get a job in the electrical, the carpentry, and the plumbing because they don't have enough hours. Are you, is somebody going to sign off and, you know, I know you said you have to send this information to DESI.
Yeah.
I don't know, are they going to, is this, is this, you know, is this serious? Because I don't want the students to be, you know, to be fooled or going into it. Because there's a lot of programs out there that students go to, and they sign up, and they graduate, and then when it's time to get a job, everybody washes their hands like punch pilots, and then the, the students are there on their own.
Sure.
Is the program going to provide or place these students in a job?
Yep, the best way that I can, of course, I, I can never necessarily guarantee things. Although I feel pretty confident in guaranteeing this. But part of the application process for this program is, whatever programs you're going to be opening, you have to have your program advisory come and look. And a program advisory is multiple folks, both programs probably have 15 to 20 members of, you know, employers, people who do training, working in that program. So they've looked and they've seen, we already have the curriculum laid out for these programs. And when they looked and they saw the space that we're going to have, saw what the equipment we're going to be purchasing, and saw the curriculum that we already have, they were thrilled. They were excited. They were talking about, I could hire these people immediately. We have, just last week, we went to, up at the Chamber of Commerce, something called the Compact, which is a group of folks, educational leaders, business leaders. And all everybody was talking about is, we just need to get these people into the, get their foot in the door, get the training going, because they are all looking to hire people immediately as they come out. I am confident, yes.
Yeah, it is wonderful. I just want to make sure that the students are going to be able to get a job.
Yes, I am confident that they will be able to get hired upon completion, 100%. Yeah.
Thank you.
No worries.
Mr. Chairman, just a few thoughts. Superintendent Brown, thanks for being here. Like everyone's saying, this is a great idea. There's certainly a need for it from Chamber of Commerce's presentation just a few weeks ago, and they've been saying this for years. And even when I worked there, I remember doing these, these interviews with business owners from around this region, and they all say the same exact thing, especially, you know, the blue collar jobs across the spectrum, saying the exact same thing. They just need trained, qualified workers. And that was their number one problem as a business. So this is great. Just a few clarifying questions. And I looked up as much as I could just while you were talking.
Yep.
Let's be real. But so the Chapter 74 programs, the onus is on us, is on the sending school to send in the application. So is that the biggest reason why, you know, applies the FYI and the presentation, which I appreciate? Is there another reason why you're here before us tonight? Is there any commitments on our end that we should be aware of, you know, signing up for this program or sending the application in?
I mean, outside a big part of the program and supporting it and.
The one that comes to mind is just the logistics and the transportation. And you mentioned that there's some money to pay for broken cars and stuff, but I guess my biggest concern, just to get to the point, is, is whether this is, you know, exclusive to some extent to kids that can get themselves to Monty Tech to attend the program? Because there's a lot of kids, especially that, that want to do this, that are qualified, that have, you know, the aspiration, that might not have the means to get themselves to Monty Tech. And there's a bigger conversation around that, of students that want to go to Monty Tech that aren't able to for other reasons, you know, during the daytime, and that's another conversation. But just for this program, you know, what can we do to help make sure that, you know, those kids can attend? Is there a commitment from us to pay for logistics, transportation, or anything relevant to this?
Sure. So what I will say is, Mr. Jokola mentioned how we do a planning grant. So each district was able to put together a team that helps kind of plan for their specific needs. We've met a couple times as a full group. And one of the things we talked about in terms of transportation, and one of it, the original proposal, if anyone sees some of the original articles, was to do a split day, where we would take the juniors in the morning and then flip and have the seniors come in the afternoon. And that just seemed like it was going to be, you know, a little bit different way of achieving it. And actually, it was the team from Pittsburgh that said, listen, why don't we just use the A week, B week that you're using? Because that will solve one of the problems that we were having. And one of the problems we were having was transportation, was how, if we did a split day, how are we going to get the kids back to the school in the middle of the day and down to the facility?
Right.
And now, if you're just doing a regular A week, B week, that's gone. So actually, the way we're going to transport the students is, we already have buses that go all over Pittsburgh picking up our kids. When we, when we're told which kids are being enrolled into the program, we'll identify where the closest Monty Tech bus stop is, and that's where we're going to pick them up. So no one's going to have to worry about being picked up. The other thing we also did talk about was, if they choose, there is parking down there. If students are, because we're only talking juniors and seniors, so some of these kids will have licenses. They could also potentially drive as well. But, but the main thing is buses, they, they will be able to get picked up and dropped off right at their home, well, not right at their home, but close enough where a bus stop is.
That's great.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
No worries. Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, the shop part of this program, these students will be involved with, this will not be at Monty Tech, it's at a different location, is that correct?
No, it will be at 270 Westminster Street, which if you don't know exactly where I'm talking about, if you can picture where the old, yeah, the top right is where it is. It's where the old Il Riquetti Restaurant is.
Yes, okay.
Yep, it's right next to there, so, yep. Most recently, it was owned by Wachusett Brewery, who used it for cold storage for many years.
Now they're across.
Now they're across the street, exactly.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. And again, we, we.
We have, just for the school committee's benefit, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Roach, and Stuart in the back are all members of the, the planning team from Pittsburgh. So we've been trying to put the finishing touches on the MOA, and like I said, we'll have that signed by the end of the week. And then I think there's still probably some logistical issues more internal for each of the three districts in terms of scheduling and all that, but that's a secondary issue.
Absolutely, we're very excited.
Okay, great.
Thanks so much, folks. Have a great evening.
You too.
Next up, we have our Human Resources Director, Kerry Fabbali, who's going to give an update on Power School, which is our new platform that we're using for human resources, for application tracking, and also upcoming job fairs, so.
Yes, I've been quite busy. John's going to put a little slideshow together just to kind of give you a feel. Thank you for having me. I'm happy to announce that I will be here for quite a few years now, so thank you. This is our Office of Human Resources website, and I put the QR code on there in case anyone at home needs to find us. But that's, that's the, the front page of our Office of Human Resources webpage. Now, on the next slide, I'm going to talk to you about what we've done, which is procure Power School or Talent Ed Recruit and Hire. Power School is the big conglomerate name for many programs that a lot of school districts use for many things, including a student information system. We're not using it for that. We're using Talent Ed Recruit and Hire and records. I will come and discuss records when we get into that, because I had to build these things in the few, last few months that I've been here, as we go along. So that's our cover page, and this is where our applicants will find us. You can get to it on our, on our webpage, and then this is the new portal. You might be familiar with School Spring, which we've used for many years. It's really just an advertising, and it doesn't, it's not as robust as this. What I've managed to build is a more useful application, which will help for talent screening for principals. They can screen for licensure, additional language skills. There's a place for applicants to voluntarily share with us their ethnic and racial background. So all the data that we need, so that we can make the right decisions moving forward, is there, so that we get that. That list on the right is actually the current positions that are on Talent Ed right now. We're still transitioning some old positions out of School Spring, but it is a more robust, and I find it to be incredibly helpful for principals and anyone doing the hiring. So any of our directors, any hiring managers, school business maintenance, and nutrition services. So that list on the right will get much longer. Next one, please. So the Talent Ed Recruit and Hire, there's the link to all of our job postings. We will be seen on School Spring. That will just become an advertising portal. And so when there's a job that's on School Spring, it will then bring an applicant to Talent Ed and Hire. And also, part of the situation that they have with School Spring, Indeed.com, we don't pay for that. They just pick up our jobs. And I've been getting the, so we are in a lot of places just by doing this. Did you have a question? I'm sorry?
It goes on Indeed automatically because.
They pick up our, they pick up whatever we post.
That's great.
Yeah, so I don't have, I don't have to do anything. Yay. Kind of excited about that because that's, and so when it's posted on there, it takes people back to School Spring, which then takes us back to the application. Applicants will be contacted by principals and directors through the Talent Ed portal. And on the bottom there, I did a screenshot of what the menu looks like. So if we have a particular applicant who's interested, maybe they're interested in an elementary position, and they applied at one of our elementary schools and was a second runner-up, they can click on it and actually ask for a signup for job alerts. So you can always, you can ask for things and you'll get a pop-up, hey, they have another elementary, or whatever you, you ask for. Then there are a couple links for viewing your job listing, and obviously, if you forgot your username, which, that's the link that you go to on there. The next slide. So some of the things that I've managed to do are updated job descriptions to include specific licensure requirements. One of the things that I noticed that we omitted on a lot of our job descriptions in years past is what specific licensure requirement you need. And you need to have specific licensures for middle school, for elementary. We really want to push for fully licensed teachers. This also allows us to see where they are in the process. So even if they're, say, a graduating senior this May, there's a question, will you have your licensure by the time you start this job? So it also allows for people to start applying now for positions that will be opened up in March later this month for next year. An option to import application from, applications from other districts. A lot of districts use this, and so if they've applied in another district.
It's popular.
And they don't want, and they apply to ours, we will, it will pull a lot of their information over. I did ask quite a few specific questions to Pittsburgh, but at least 90% of their work is done. So that's really, that's convenient for them. Again, the updated application questions include additional language skills and licensure and certification. And as I'm going around training the principals and hiring managers on how to use this, they'll be able to sort. So if it's a middle, we have an anticipated middle school math position posted, they can check, they can check to see if that, if the incoming applicant has the right licensure. You don't want to hire someone who has a 9 through 12 in math for middle school. You can contact them through the portal and say, are you willing to get the 5 through 8? But this is a lot of, I, I feel like it's a very robust program to get better use and better use of the time for the hiring managers and principals. And applicants can see their progress. They can see, they will get automated updates. We've reviewed your application. We're inviting you in for an interview. Can you do, you know, can you send additional information? So there's that, there's a lot of very quick communication that we weren't able to provide before with School Spring. Next. Two of the upcoming recruitment fairs that are in-person, Saturday, March 18th. I have a couple of us joining me, an assistant principal and a teacher, joining me for the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. And then Merck is the big one that has been going on for dozens of years. That's Thursday, April 20th in Boston, and we're, once again, a sponsor at that one. I will be at both of those. Those are in-person. There are several virtual recruitment fairs coming up. One through DESI and Mass Hire. The virtual ones, having been in this position in other districts, they really don't yield much. I will fit them into my schedule, but these, these in-person, I was at both of these last year, and Fitchburg was represented at both of these last year, and we are able to get applicants involved. And we've, I've been advertising for the one, the diversity in education one for Cambridge. Merck does their own advertising. We're a partner with them, so we, we go back and forth. I think the, the last slide, I think the next one is the last one. Oh, this is our website. Oh, follow us on LinkedIn. That's what I meant. That's why I put that there. I forgot. We have a bigger presence on LinkedIn, so every time something comes up, I can post directly from Talent Ed to LinkedIn, and we ha, and I've updated our page. We never had a logo or our picture up there. I encourage you all to, to follow us on LinkedIn. Mr. Jokolo is on there. And then upcoming trainings, we're standardizing hiring practices. Doing some anti-bias training for hiring principals. Continued licensure support for new teachers. We've hired quite a few teachers in the last few years with emergency licenses, and we need to get them to advance their license to the next step. So we've built a, there's been a robust mentorship and working with those teachers and moving them forward. And then still working on student-to-teacher pipeline and pair-to-teacher pipeline. But I want to go back to standard hiring practice, standardizing hiring practices. We have several, we have two middle schools and several elementary schools, and I want to get them to be doing more similar standardized hiring practices. We want to be able to get the right type of applicant and the right type of teacher that we hire. So I've been busy since October, or at least I feel like I have, and I think that was, I think that's the last one. Other questions? Dr. Knight?
Is it okay? Ms. Carrie, the Department of Education, DESI, has issued a lot of emergency certifications, right? So I'm, and I'm just saying this because I want to see that Fitchburg is doing the best thing that needs to be done, so that, you know, you can, we have the best people in our schools for our students, which deserve the best. So I guess my question is, when you hire, let's talk about, let's say, teachers. When you, when you, you know, you get an application from a teacher, are the principals making sure that all the applicants, every ethnic background, everybody have the qualifications that are required? If it's an emergency certification, which DESI has approved, but it's something that has been approved by them, are our principals making sure that everybody across the board are having these things in place before we hire them? Or we just hire someone because we like them, or they're somebody's cousin, sister's daughter, or?
So I will say that the system that we had before made it more difficult to find those things out. So this system allows us to ask those questions and get that, the right information. And part of the standardized hiring practices is what to look for. In the, I created a whole packet, a training packet for the principals, so that when they get to licensure, for instance, I gave them some handouts, that this is what this type of license is. This is how long it's good for, because I, I bet you can remember, you could ride those provisional, those provisional licenses for quite some time. And that, and, and so some of those things needed to be, we needed reminders. So a lot of those things coming forward will be easier, because that is obviously the goal. We want to make sure that we get the best qualified candidate. But we weren't even asking, I don't think, the right questions at the time, and School Spring was very limiting. That's why many, many school districts have gone to Talent Ed, because-
But moving forward, we are going to make sure that everyone has the educational background that they need in order to, you know, to be, to be hired.
Yes.
And if they don't have everything, but at least the Department of Education gave them the emergency license, because there's a deadline. I think it was just like a year, and then they-
They keep moving that.
Extended a little bit more, yeah.
They've extended it. So I'm waiting to see their, their next update, because that will, so one of the, one of the things that they've done is they grandfathered everybody for another year.
Mm-hmm.
And now this year, what they're doing is, they're going to have, they're going to require a payment, I think it's $25, to renew it for an additional year. But for English language learner teachers, ESL teachers, and for special education, for English learner EL teachers, they needed to pass the MTLS, or now try, or have proven that they've tried. And then for special education teachers who are emergency licensed, they need to make adequate, I call it adequate yearly progress through structured guidance and support. So we need to be able to support them and do the mentorship. It is more difficult for special educators. There's a lot to learn as a special educator. I'm a former special educator, and I had an internship back in the day. And so it's similar to that. It's a structured guidance and support. So we need to make sure on our end, when we're hiring someone, that they're committed to be, to furthering their license, and they're willing to do the work. If it's a math teacher or a science teacher, they literally just have to pay 25 extra dollars for the, to extend it another year. But that's-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. Do we have a directional link from the city's Human Resources page to our page?
Not yet, but I can do that.
I just thought it might be some-
Because I think, I, I have one of theirs on my side, so I will, I will double-check on that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Because I'm not sure, so I set up that Office of Human Resources website last time I was here, and I don't know if I ever relinked it to them, but we're, theirs, they're on ours. So we'll do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Just a thought occurred to me that, I read that there's, the teaching profession is, seems to be attracting fewer people, for whatever reason. I'm not giving any analysis. So hearing you, it almost, it puts me back many years to strong, solid, let's get all of the education in. How does that dovetail with reality of today's lack of people that, that are interested? Or the flight from schools, you know, that teachers, and maybe you don't even have to answer that, but that thought occurs to me.
Well, it is probably the worst part of my job, because it is the reality. It's that, but I still believe in public education. I went through public education. I was a state school graduate. I was a teacher. Some days in my office, I might say, hey, I might go back to a classroom. I'm signing up for all the Reading Across America things this month. We have to present it better, and I do have volunteers going with me to the recruitment fairs. And we do have some teachers who are at various stages of their own careers, and they still love it. And so those are the people that I'm looking to vol, to volunteer to join me at the recruitment fairs. I can't do it alone.
Well, good luck to you.
Unfortunately, Mark is always during April vacation, so, and I got, but I did get a, I got two volunteers for the day after St. Patrick's Day, so I'm pleased as punch. And, and we just have to keep plugging along and do our best on our side.
Carrie, do we have many of our paras taking advantage of our programs to help them get their degree?
That is something that we're still building. But I do have a list of paras who already have their bachelor's, and we need to zero in on our paras and who we can support, because there are a lot of funds for that right now. We are fortunate enough for that. And so some of the things are even just getting them reimbursed for para-pro. We've done that when they pass it, and it moves them up. But I don't think we've had enough time. I've only been here a few months, but-
We put money in, in the budget to help paras.
Yes.
Yeah, I was wanting-
But I don't think it's-
If many of them are taking advantage of it.
I don't think we've publicized a lot of things enough. I need a much more robust website, and I need people to know about the website. And I don't, and even, even now that I'm back, people are, they don't really, I've put forms on there, and they never, and they don't look. So I need to be doing a lot more marketing.
Could we look through the college, maybe, to run men's service course for us?
I think John and I have been trying to-
Yeah, so, so Bo actually had a meeting this past week with Fitchburg State and other local superintendents, and we are looking to start a cohort beginning in the fall at Fitchburg State for para-professionals to get their degree.
We put money in there to, to help out.
Yep. Yep.
Can I have a link on your website? Can I have a link on your website?
On the city website?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, see, there you go. I'm here. I may as well ask.
Ask and you shall receive, right?
I'm like, well, here's the guy.
Then wait, what are you waiting for?
I don't know. Maybe I did it. I don't know.
Duck up the phone.
Yes, it's okay. Ms. Carrie, I don't know if you know or not, you just got here, you said, but are we doing anything with the induction program in Fitchburg Public Schools? The program that many districts have in place to attract and to retain teachers in the system? Are we doing anything with this? Or is this moving forward?
So we're required to do the mentorship and induction program for the first year, and I'm going to ask John to speak to that, because that was greatly developed in my absence. And, and it, but it has, but it's amazing, and it's grown, and it's, it's super, so.
Yeah, so this past year, and currently throughout this school year, we've been working on revamping the program. We hired a new coordinator to oversee it, in addition to changing the curriculum that we offer to our teachers to support them. So we have a mentor text that teachers are, new teachers are actually reading and going through that breaks up the school year throughout the, each month, and it talks to them about what to look for. In addition, one of the things that we got a lot of feedback from teachers was our veteran teachers who are being mentors to these new teachers. They asked for more trainings throughout the year on how to support new teachers better, so we're offering those now three times a year. And also, after your first-year induction program, a lot of districts don't offer anything else. Fitchburg has decided in year two or year three, teachers have the opportunity to take the Skillful Teacher, which is an excellent course that really teaches, a teacher really how to teach, right? So that's an additional follow-up that we now offer to our year two and year three teachers. So not only do they get the first-year mentorship program, they actually get more support in year two and year three now, moving forward.
Okay, is it possible, just throwing that up there, you said that, that they meet three times a year. Is it possible, only because of what we heard at a previous meeting, you know, about, you know, teachers leaving, you know, exodus of teachers, for this to be a little bit more often? Because we need to do something so that we can keep the teachers that we have. So maybe three times a year, they may not be feeling like they're supported enough?
So we actually meet with our new teachers once a month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we, the, the veteran staff that support our new teachers, we meet with them three year, three times a year to actually help them support the new teachers better. Our new teachers meet every month. In addition to that, they meet weekly with their building basement door.
Very good.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
And in addition, we have about 20 teachers participating in a teacher leadership academy that we're partnering with Focus Schools. Carrie Purcell, who's been before our school committee, and they just had a session this afternoon.
Today?
So.
We need to keep those teachers here.
Absolutely.
That's our number-one goal.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, someone who needs almost no introduction. She, she's Facebook famous, a Fitchburg High School graduate. Just celebrated her birthday. We won't say which one.
Big fella, we can say it.
World traveler, probably National Geographic aspiring host, and someone who's living her dream and taking along a lot of people from Fitchburg for the ride. So welcome, Tara Sweeney, and thank you for being here to talk about your, your, was it, three-month journey to Antarctica. And, you know, you're also unofficially or officially our STEM ambassador to, to, almost now for the, all corners of the globe here. So welcome, and thank you for coming.
It's so nice to be here. Thank you so much. And for those of you I haven't had the pleasure of meeting over the years, I'm Tara Sweeney. I'm a 1991 graduate of Fitchburg High School, a proud public schools graduate that has, the school system, the city, has set me up to accomplish everything I've done in my home life, and that brings me to tears. So thank you for having me back. And before I received the official invitation to come give your presentation tonight, my goal was just to, was twofold, to come back here and express my gratitude for you, and two, to tell you that I'm super excited to spend the rest of this week with different schools throughout our school system. My gratitude for you is several times over, over all these years, but specifically because a greeting, a season's greeting card from this committee, from this city, from the students within the city, arrived to me on a glacier in West Antarctica. And there's no way to quantify the tears that were running down my face when I saw that card delivered to my tent. And I hope after the end of this presentation, you'll have a better understanding of just how remote Thwaites Glacier is in all of our amazing world. And the second part is, I'm just so grateful to be the school system's STEM ambassador. Thank you for continuing to have me, and let me come back and try to help motivate, in my own small part, all of these amazing kids to go off and do great things, the same way that all of you, many of you, literally helped me go off and do in my own life. And while I'm on a glacier, you're still encouraging me to keep doing great things. So I wanted to let you know that I don't have any formal presentation for you tonight. I just took a sampling of about 100 of my photos and videos of, of the 6,000 photos I took and the several dozen videos that I took while I was in Antarctica. And if at any time something piques your interest and you'd like to chat about it, please just let me know, and I can divert my conversation. I did have the amazing opportunity to travel to Antarctica to be part of an Antarctic science expedition as part of the International Thwaites Glacier Collaboration. The ITGC is a collaboration between the United States and the UK, funded by the National Science Foundation and the Natural Environmental Resource Council within the UK. Within those organizations, within that structure, the US Antarctic Program and the British Antarctic Survey support all of the scientists and all of the support personnel who head down to, in this case, McMurdo Station in Antarctica. On average, there are about 1,000 people who have the privilege of traveling from Christchurch, New Zealand, down to McMurdo Station in Antarctica each summer season. It's during the summer season that most of the science gets accomplished. Of those 1,000 amazingly talented people, about 100 to 200 of us are scientists engaged in various scientific research across the continent. I had the pleasure to be a part of one of eight teams supporting the Thwaites Glacier Collaboration, and I was part of the Thwaites Interdisciplinary Margin Evolution Team, which is an amazing way to say, we get to use geophysical equipment, seismometers, radar, to image a very important glacier in our world right now, which is called Thwaites Glacier. The amazingness of being in, in McMurdo is in and of itself, was a dream come true for me to grow up knowing I wanted to be an Antarctic field scientist, and then to arrive at McMurdo. But our research site is not actually in McMurdo. While we're there, we bond as a team, we do a number of Antarctic field safety trainings, we learn how to take care of each other, we learn how to use our, our survival equipment, and we go out and test all of that equipment together. And when we get certified that we're ready to go out in the field, that's when our work takes, goes to the next level. From McMurdo Station, we travel another 1,000 miles to go deeper away, deeper into Antarctica for us, away from McMurdo Station. And we head out to the West Antarctic Ice Sheet Divide Camp, a camp that specifically stood up each summer for our Thwaites Glacier collaborators. There's a team of about 10, 10 staff members who go out ahead of all of the scientists to actually dig out all the equipment, set it up at the, at this area of the West Antarctic Ice Sheet. And then whenever science, they say science is ready, which is usually about two weeks later, about 60 scientists descend upon this camp. From that camp, or at that camp, we're organizing all of our cargo, all of our science gear. We're testing it before we head over to the glacier. At that camp, small aircraft show up, pick us up, we load our gear. Our small teams jump onto the planes, and then they deliver us to Thwaites Glacier, which is another few hundred miles from the West Antarctic Ice Sheet. And so the day that I got dropped off on a glacier, which is still crazy to be able to say, I, I joined six other team members who were already there in advance of me and a secondary team member. One aircraft taking me, a colleague, our equipment to drop us off on a glacier. And I will never forget the day that I watched that plane take off without us. It was surreal. It was one of those life moments that I could not wait to experience. And again, to, there's no way to quantify the number of tears that were coming down, down through my very cold goggles and face as we're now on Thwaites Glacier. Thwaites Glacier is important because it's contributing to the global sea level rise throughout our world. It's amazing to me that for the rest of my life, we're going to be talking about Thwaites Glacier and how it's going to be impacting coastal living around the world. And how, this is the awesome photo of the plane- And how, this is the awesome photo of the plane taking off, I'm just, want to say, of what that felt like to see that plane take off is just amazing.
Left all alone, huh?
Left all alone. Many of you know that even at 50, I continue to be an aspiring space explorer. So to be out there on a glacier with seven other humans and watching that aircraft take off without us, knowing that all of our training, all of our commitment to this science, all of our commitment to each other is now in full force and effect. We are there for each other. And as some of these photos and videos will say, we got to experience Antarctica as the harsh continent out here. We endured some, yeah, so I was grateful to receive a hat, a Fitchburg hat, from, from you guys, which was absolutely amazing. And I tried to wear it as frequently as I could, usually with two other hats underneath of it, just for reference, but.
Tara?
Yes.
So you're there in the summer. So what's the temperature in these pictures right now when you're in the, you're there?
From, from the best of our forecasting, so we are very, we are disconnected in every shape and form, with the exception of satellite phones and our personal GPS receivers. So we get limited weather forecasting while we're out there. The best of our forecasting ability was to say perhaps as cold as about minus 28 degrees Fahrenheit. And I know that especially this past winter, for all of you, there have been some very cold days and weather. And I just would like to say that in some of these pictures, you'll see our living conditions, and they were simply tents. And we had personal tents, and then we had one tent dedicated to all of our science operations, all of our science equipment. And then we had a second tent, which was our kitchen tent, and that is the only heated tent that we have. And it's only heated when we're melting snow to boil into water to then use for our food. So it's, we don't have, we did not have any long-term heating throughout the day. Yes, ma'am?
How long were you out there?
We were out on the glacier, I was out there for about 20 days.
Wow.
Between, between the West Antarctic Ice Sheet and Thwaites Glacier.
Did you ever take off your shoes?
Yes, yes. So the US Antarctic Program actually issues to us extreme cold weather gear. And so I would normally wear four layers of winter clothing when I was inside practically any tent for my general workday. When I would step out of the tent, I would at least put on two more winter coats. When we would be snowmobiling to our work sites, we would also put on our big, we call it the big red jacket that the USAP is known for issuing to its participants. Sometimes, I should say at night, when we were getting hunkered in for the evening, you could walk into your tent and it served as that windbreak. So while the temperature was absolutely the same inside and outside the tent, as soon as we got into the tent, we were able to quickly, and I'll stress it, very quickly, change our clothing, get into our sleep gear, and then crawl into our double walled down sleeping bag, which was really helpful. So back to your boots. So they issue us really large, heavy boots, about three pounds each for each boot, and they have special liners in them. And then I would generally have two pairs of socks on throughout that. And we go through a rotation of checking our feet at night, make sure we don't have any cold injury, changing our socks out, drying our liners. But for the most part, when I was on the glacier itself, I had the issued extreme cold weather boots on my feet at all times.
With all that, were you ever saying still, like, it's really still cold with all that? Or is it just bearable?
The, the short answer is, I'm really grateful for modern, the advances in modern technology, because I say I had four layers on, and I absolutely did. But thankfully, the technology is such is, you don't feel as much like a, as a kindergartner wearing a snowsuit for the first time. There are moments where we all felt that, for sure. But for the most part, we can figure out how to do the job we need to do through a robust layering system that gives us the freedom of movement that we need, which requires a lot of digging, a lot of just shoveling, a lot of equipment moving, a lot of snowmobiling. So, thank you for that question. Yes, sir?
I just wondered, was it light, how long did you have light in daylight?
24/7. So I never saw sunset from November 1st until February 10th. I spent 102 days in Antarctica, and during that entire time, there was no sunset. In fact, a colleague of mine just sent me the first picture of sunset, which occurred for a very few seconds on February 20th. And that's why we do so much science in Antarctica at that time, because it just affords us so many opportunities to be out doing our work.
So you said you were a crew of seven. So what, you rotated it out? Or is it the same seven?
Ultimately, yeah, ultimately, we were supposed to deploy 14 members of our team. There were a number of challenges that we endured throughout this season, and eight of us actually made it to the glacier to do the science. We had to pare down our science objectives to be successful. Had we been all 14 of us and been able to be out there for the full 60 days that we were anticipating, we would have gone through most likely night shifts, night and day shifts. Because there's only so much equipment, there's only so many people you can have in two tents, and we would have done some shifting of rotations. Because it was eight of us out there, we generally worked a day shift, which was for us during the warmest time of the day. We would generally, generally get up around 4:00 in the morning, and we'd conclude all of our activities by 4:00 in the afternoon, and we'd be fast asleep by 5:30, 6:00 at night. Which was an amazing, amazing accomplishment, because we deployed so many of our seismic instruments, and we were able to do so many of our radar surveys with only eight of us out there.
Where your camp was on the waste glacier, how far was that from the end of the glacier that goes into the ocean?
That's, that's a great question. So let me, let me try to answer it, giving you a little bit of perspective. We often say that Thwaites Glacier is about the size of Florida, with a couple miles of ice on top of it. Our waste divide camp, notionally, we could say maybe that's around Jacksonville. From Jacksonville, our team was flown out to, say, Clearwater, Tampa, St. Pete area. And so the glacier's edge would be more down towards Miami, Fort Lauderdale. So we were safely away because our science is looking at the eastern sheer margin of Thwaites Glacier, which is where the velocity changes a bit across the glacier. And that's what we were looking for, is how does the, how does the ice interface with the continent beneath it? And what can that tell us about its progression over the next several decades?
Thank you.
Were there any animals there?
We did. We did get, we did get to see a lot of wildlife. We, we weren't expecting to see anything on Thwaites Glacier. We did end up seeing two skua fly inland to us, if you will. Yeah, and the skua is a bird that'll pop up here shortly. Beyond that, there's no, there are, there's no wildlife on Thwaites Glacier or at, on, across most of the West Antarctic Ice Sheet where we were. Most of these pictures are coming from McMurdo. McMurdo wildlife are the skua, which are like seagulls, Weddell seals. We have emperor penguins, Adelie penguins, and then orcas. And it, it was, thank you for saying that. It was absolutely amazing. If you talk about feeling like you're in a National Geographic episode, or a Nova special, or a Discovery Channel engagement, it's just amazing to watch seals be born, watch, watch penguins just jump out of the water, and watch orcas make their presence known as the dominators of the area. So I'm super excited, because like I said, I'm now going to get to share some of these awesome pictures and stories with McKay School, and I, we're still figuring out which day that will be this week. But I'll be at Crocker School all day long, talking to all grade levels. Crocker was my elementary school, McKay was my brother's school. So hopefully, we'll be able to fill in the rest of, of that timeline for tomorrow, Wednesday, and Friday.
Could you have FATV follow you and film you? Because that could go on FATV, it'd be great. You know, well, why?
Should be a guest while you're here, try to get, get on one of the shows that.
Yeah. And then you can continue to show them in education classes, you know, teachers, science teachers.
Well, that, that's a great idea. Yes, sir?
Just, thank you for doing that. And, and thank you for doing this. And thank you for doing what you're going to do with the schools. It's, it's great to see an alum who is successful, but who is willing to share their experience in the schools where you went to get your beginning. And it's nice to have somebody from Fitchburg Public Schools be as considerate and successful as you are. So thanks, Tara. I really appreciate it.
That's very kind of you to say. Thank you so much for having me. And again, a postcard, our, our season's greeting card from Fitchburg, Massachusetts, made its way all the way to Thwaites Glacier. And I can't thank you enough.
What is, what is it you're wearing there? What is that?
This is the US Antarctic Program logo.
Yeah.
I happen.
The compliments on their color choice.
I happen to approve of, of, of this particular jacket. So I felt very much at home in my big red.
Maybe the mayor could get you a circular seal of the city of Fitchburg. You put on the other.
Well.
Yeah, show them.
If you'll excuse me just for one moment.
Come on, look at this. Watch. There it is.
I like the way you manifest things.
There you go. Nice, very nice.
I'll certainly wear this proudly. And Mr. Mayor, what, what I would love to do is, you know, I took a few photos for the city and for the school system with some patches that I brought down. My goal, when I have just more than just a few days being back home altogether, I just returned February 10th from Antarctica and made my way here to Fitchburg, I, I'd like to, to mount those for the city.
Sure.
With a small placard.
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
So that it's something that.
Great. You know, Tara's the city hall.
Absolutely.
Who betcha?
Absolutely.
Tara, we don't know what she's going to wind up, because she's also trained as an astronaut, and she's still looking maybe.
I, I am still an aspiring space explorer, and that's part of my excitement with talking to all the kids in the school system, because here I am, I just turned 50 years old, and I am still amazing, so grateful for all the amazing opportunities that I get, I am afforded in my own career. And I, I'd just like to share with the kids that every single day that you have the gift of waking up, then is a day that you can sit there and dream out loud and figure out what it is you want to do in your life and who it is you want to be in your life. Because what an incredible gift we have. And if we can help elevate and uplift each other as we pursue our own careers, well, I think that makes for a good day.
That's great.
Okay. Wait, it's hard to top that.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
We're going to, we're going to do our best, at least, to educate the, the school committee and the community by way of FATV. And again, I would just want to thank Tara again for that, for sharing her experience and the messages of inspiration for, not only for us, but this week for our students.
Thank you.
And, you know, you'll inspire some, some students' dreams, and whether it be space or Antarctica or something else. I'm sure you'll leave an impression on, on many students this week, so thank you.
Well, thank you so much. At the risk of being rude, I'd like to turn around and give one of those students a hug.
Sure. Okay. Okay. So it's, it's that time of year where we begin our annual budget process, and tonight, myself and Mr. Roach and maybe Mr. Thompson with some additional commentary, we'll talk about the, the budget process, some numbers, the Student Opportunity Act, how it all aligns together, fits together. This is like, I'll use the metaphor of spring, the baseball season, and I, I think now where the season has begun, almost begun, we're in spring training, where we know the, the governor's budget from the state, which was released a couple of weeks ago now. And we're just in the process of starting to digest that. And as we've done historically, we immediately share the governor's budget with the school community, community. This is, this represents the basis of our planning going forward. So as we've done last year, we start with our promise, all means all, every student, every day, no exceptions. This is taken from our strategic plan. This is something that we showed last year, this is something that we share with our staff, that grounds us with our North Star, our focus, our moral imperative. Again, as we've also been sharing with our staff, and just as a reminder to all of the members of the school committee, the values of our plan of the district, being adaptable, collaborative, as we heard earlier with Mr. Brown from Monty Tech, trustworthy, growth-focused, and being vulnerable. Again, we don't have all the answers, and we're looking to get better every day here. Again, we have six commitments that with the additional funding this upcoming year and this year, we're working to implement. And I have to apologize, because I don't have my reading glasses on, but Mr. Thompson.
Yeah. Curriculum that is accessible to and reflective of our students is number one. Number two, a district-wide system, tiered system of academic and social emotional support. Number three, staff development and diverse recruitment plan. Number four, strategic and effective use of all resources. Number five, a sense of welcoming and belonging with, for students, parents, staff, and all number, and all members of our community. And last but not least, number six, community and stakeholder engagement.
So the first few slides here really represent the Department of Ed's communication to all districts in regards to the Student Opportunity Act. And for the beginning budgets, this is the first step in the budget cycle, the governor's budget, then the House updates, and then finally the Senate update, which usually occurs in the July time period. So this upcoming year, which is fiscal year '24, Chapter 70, which is the educational aid for public education, is about $6.6 billion statewide. And that's almost a 600 million increase, 9.8% over the current fiscal year. With the SOA, I'll call it, as the Student Opportunity Act, try to be brief here, higher foundation budget, which is also called our net school spending budget here in Fitchburg in five areas. It addresses the benefits and fixed charges, benefits including, you know, health insurance and other charges incurred kind of at the above-the-line or indirect level. Again, the increased need for guidance and psychological services of our students, also the increased special education needs, but also out-of-district tuition. The Operational Services Division approved a 14% tuition increase, and for Fitchburg, that would represent about a $600,000 increase for next year. Additional funding for English language learners and funding for low-income students. Again, the House won, as this budget is called, is, reflects the changes for inflation in the, above five areas, and closes an additional one-sixth of the funding gap. And next school year will be year three of the, year three of six of the Student Opportunity Again, this is just more background in terms of the low-income threshold being 185% of the federal poverty level in accordance with the Act, and restores the definition of the low income, which was used prior to the FY17 budget. Again, based on 185% of the federal poverty level, up to 133% threshold used for economically disadvantaged match from FY17 to FY22. So statewide low-income enrollment for FY24 is 421,314 compared to 407,000 for this current year. So you can see, that's an additional roughly 14,000 students who are now categorized as low-income by the Department of Ed. Then started in this year, the department designated student enrollment on October 1st as low-income if the student meets the following criteria, participating in a state public assistance program, including SNAP, transitional aid, and mass health and foster care, verified as low-income through a supplemental data collection process, or reported as homeless through the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Act. Again, the Act also. Again, the Act also assumes, assumed in district to special education enrollment percentages, increases the rate for vocational schools, vocational students from 4.75% to 5% and 3.75% to 4%. So that's for us, for the non-vocational students. The rate increases for next year close an additional one-sixth of that funding gap. So the rates for next year are 4.9 and 3.9 respectively of vocational, non-vocational. Then on top of the rate increases, the foundation budget at, again, the state level, filters down into the employee benefits inflation rate for next year is 5.16%. And that tries to average out the three-year health insurance increases from the group insurance commission plans that many districts participate in. We in Fitchburg do not participate in GIC, but there are many districts that do. And historically, the inflation factor of 4.5% has been the ceiling for foundation budget rates. So this is where we start getting into a little bit of the numbers here. And at a high level, our enrollment did increase three students based on the October 1 census. When all the data is cleansed and verified, basically, flat enrollment or small increases is a good sign for Fitchburg. Then if you look at the foundation budget, which is also net school spending, which is the minimum amount of funding that combined the city and state have to allocate for public education here in Fitchburg. Total foundation budget net school spending of $96,678,430 is an 8.82% increase. Overall, that's $7.8 million. The Chapter 70 aid increased, again, based on the additional one-sixth funding of the Student Opportunity Act, is a nine-point, almost 9.5% increase. And the local contribution from the city expected increase is about just under 7%. So typically, when the budget is received from us, we share this with the city auditor. And then the city auditor shares with us what our direct spending number is after all, and direct charges are calculated by the city. Mr. Roach?
Yeah, so just a little bit further into, you know, a charting of the increases over the past five years. You can see where Student Opportunity Act came into existence in 2022. And you can really kind of see a sharp incline in the overall foundation budget for the Fitchburg Public Schools, which Superintendent Jokula, you know, noted is intended to address many of the characteristics of the Student Opportunity Act, but certainly provides great opportunity, as it says, for the students and faculty and families in Fitchburg Public Schools. So 2024, $96,678,000 and change is certainly going to give us a great opportunity to do many excellent things for our kids and faculties. This is, you saw this on another slide, but it highlights, I think, the growing increase in the state's investment in the kids here in Fitchburg. And though there is an increase to the local contribution, the percentage increase has gone down from approximately 25% of the overall budget in 2018, actually 25-plus percent, to under 23% at 22.7% this coming school year because the Chapter 70 will be $74 million, and the local contribution 21. So again, I think, you know, looking at some of these charts in this way really shows how the increases have been pretty dramatic in the additional dollars that the City of Fitchburg Public Schools will be receiving and have been receiving for the past three years with Student Opportunity Act. And again, it's just the third year. The contribution, it's at 50% now of catching up on those five key areas, supporting language learners, special ed students, low-income students, you know, psychological and guidance services, and then just the employee benefits that are obviously a big factor. You can see the increase in per pupil expenditure from 2020 to 2024 of $12,900 to $17,000 over. And then the top line, the dark blue, just shows how the percentage of our overall budget that is based on the largest demographic group, which is low-income. So 30%, almost 31% of the overall $96 million comes from the fact that there are 12 categories now of aid as established by the Massachusetts Department of Ed. And in those 12 categories, if the school district has 70 to 79.9% of its students that are categorized as low-income, then they're in category 11. So the multiplier is greater, and you receive more funding. So Fitchburg Public Schools is category 11 of 12. We're pretty close to 12, but that's a significant increase. And you can see how that's increased from about 23% to almost 31% in just five years. So this is another distribution of that, and it shows local contributions by some towns. This comes from a presentation that Desi presented. I think it was the Thursday of February vacation. It was a little bit of a surprise when they released it. So you can see where Fitchburg is there. And again, local contribution, the dark blue, and state aid being the gray in that column. And it just, as compared to some other towns and communities in Massachusetts, and then another city, Lawrence, Mass., which I believe actually has the highest state aid. So just kind of different views on it. We had reviewed this at our last meeting. I know we were talking about March 20th, but our resource building needs meeting is on the 21st. So we may actually come back at the, in the April school committee meeting for the first full review of the budget. So we have some time to review not only the budget requests at each site and the needs that we have to accomplish our Student Opportunity Act goals, but also be just very thorough in that. Did you want to pick it up there, Bob?
Yeah, I don't know.
Or John?
The categories that... So with the increased funding comes an increased level of accountability to the Department of Ed and reporting. So, you know, the next few slides summarize what districts like Fitchburg have done with the funds so far and what we're planning to do. So, or what's being done at a statewide level. So, Mr. Thompson, I don't know if I can just...
Yeah, I don't know, Jeremy, if you want to go to Slide 16 because I think our SOA, our plan mimics a lot of what's on there. A lot of the funds that we really have used, our SOA funds, have been around increasing the mental hea...
Is it this one? Slide 16. The one for...
Increasing the mental health supports for our students. Over the last, what, two years, I think we've hired additional clinical interventionists and SEL supports for our students throughout the district. In addition to that, we've looked at, you know, offering more supports for our special education students. We've increased the number of special education teachers in our school, in our schools. In addition to our EL teachers, we've increased the amount of EL teachers in all our schools because of the SOA funds. As we continue to look at our SOA plan, we're going to be meeting as our cabinet and with principals to look at the data and where we're at and look at what we're going to be using these funds for the next year. We also will be going, I think, the week of March 20th, will be holding an information night at Memorial Middle School for parents to come and give us some feedback on what they feel we should be using these funds on and how we use these funds. So that information will be going out soon. And we hope to see many of our community members there at that meeting to get some feedback from...
That will be March 22nd.
Is it March 22nd now? Yeah, nail that date down today, actually, right?
Nail it down.
Yeah, March 22nd. So information will be going out soon. We hope to see everyone there.
Yeah. And as Mr. Thompson noted, that, you know, this just demonstrates a number of the investments that schools like ours have utilized these funds to implement high-quality instructional materials, to really develop co-teaching teams at their sites. So that would be a special educator with a general educator or an ESL teacher with a general educator to support students, you know, across the board. You see a number of other programs. Actually, for Fitchburg, you know, I think we are one of the leading early college schools in the state. So, you know, that's a variety of different ways that schools can utilize these additional funds to really address the student needs. Again, I think that this would be another slide from Department of Ed that shows, you know, the investment and funding around some of those areas like high-quality instructional materials, co-teaching, early literacy, et cetera. And again, I think, you know, they're using data from across the state to really, again, as it says, provide opportunities for school districts to support the students who most need help and most need that kind of infusion of resources to make sure that everybody has the same kind of opportunities regardless of their zip code. So did you want to jump back here, Bob?
Yeah. So over the last, well, several months, we've been working as a leadership team. And this slide came from Cary Purcella Focus School. But basically, again, identifying the challenge, where are we at, whether it be a subgroup of our students or all our students, identifying what the need is, looking at the data, and I'll talk a little bit more about that next, looking at, you know, drawing some conclusions and the why, and brainstorming what action steps we'll take, creating a plan and then implementing it and assessing it. We have plenty of tools now for assessment. And, you know, we're just trying to get better for our students every day, every year. And if I can quote Doc tonight, we want to provide the best for our students and our staff here in Fitchburg. One of those tools that we've started using this year, and it came to our attention actually last March at an urban superintendence meeting, was a tool called Open Architects. This is data, this is a tool now that is supported by the Department of Ed. Originally, it was for just urban districts, but now they're making it available to all districts across the state. And this is a pretty powerful tool that has allowed us to look at whether it be, you know, MCAS scores or standardized test results for all subgroups, all grades, all grade levels. We can, like, slice and dice. And then also, I also compare to a basket of other urban districts to see how we compare. But also, this tool, we upload our attendance data on a daily basis. So we have about six different views on data that now we can just press here and see what either the school or the district looks like on a daily basis. Where some of the information is updated daily. Clearly, things like the standardized testing is, you know, once a year. But it's a very powerful tool, and it's being used by the district and also our schools to try to improve student outcomes.
I think that's the last slide.
Okay, so we'll end there. Any questions, comments? Again, this is, you know, the first ball has been thrown out in spring training in Fort Myers. And here in Fitchburg, the Mass. Governor has released their budget, and now we have something to swing at, so to speak.
I have a question. Do teachers have opportunity to see? I mean, I know they could be watching tonight or whatever. But is this like something that they would really understand thoroughly themselves and what you presented to us? Is that also a subject matter of conversation amongst the teachers? Or is there a gap there?
So we work with our, well, our principals, our instructional leadership teams, which is comprised of teachers, to help us identify what the needs are. Mr. Roach has gone and actually met with all the principals to get some initial requests.
But I was just thinking about the regular teachers. I mean, everybody has so much to do. But it would be nice, too, if they understood and perhaps had part, you know, to play in responding to all of these ideas.
So typically, we...
They could attend the March 22nd meeting, couldn't they?
What's that?
They could attend the March 22nd meeting?
The March 22nd meeting. Or one thing that we've also done in the past is we've had presentations to the Rep. Council of the Union. We've done special presentations. You know, as Mr. Thompson mentioned, from a community perspective, on March 22nd, we'll be gathering input from the community at Memorial. I think pizza's included up there, too.
Pizza is included?
Sure. But yeah, we're trying to get as much input as we can. And largely, a large portion of that funding will go towards either, you know, salaries. But also, this year, we added 52 positions to the district as Mr. Thompson mentioned earlier about the clinical interventionists. Fitchburg, like a lot of districts across the country, student mental health is a big issue. We're working to meet it, to improve what we're doing here.
I know. I just meant a real familiarity and as if it's their, as if it's their plan, too. And, you know, because sometimes you'll hear teachers talk, and they look at us as, I don't know, another breed of people or something, another... I just, I can imagine that group of teachers that we had that came for the special session. I mean, and whoever else is on that. It would be wonderful if they knew all of this or had a special, not a presentation to the principal of the high school or of the school.
I mean, this is something, I mean, we can share this information...
And they might have some really interesting, important appreciation or saying, you know...
As a principal, I had faculty meetings, and I laid everything out for them. And I gathered all the information from my staff, from all my staff. Asked them what they were looking for, what they needed, new curriculum materials, extra, more people that we needed, what areas needed to be strengthened. And I would gather all that information from all of my staff. And then I would submit that to the superintendent. And we'd look at, okay, I've got so much money. What do you want? What do you want to take from it, you know? So, but I think principals, they'll do that pretty much. They, John, same thing.
Yeah, just if I may. Each school, Rosemary, has a committee called the Instructional Leadership Team Committee. And this ILT team actually is the one that gives the input to the principal and works with the principal on things that the school needs, on curriculum that the school needs, on positions that the school needs. So this team kind of acts as the mouthpiece to the principal from the other members of the district. So what happens is the ILT team members meet with each group of department or grade levels on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, and they talk about things like this. And that information gets brought back to the ILT team where the principal hears that from the team. So that's the process on where that happens.
Real quick, I just think this is great. You know, like you said, it's the first pitch. But, you know, the first headline is really positive for Fitchburg. So I think that's really great. I think the five, you know, bullet points that the governor put out as the priorities for this bill, for this act, really align with our priorities. So I think we should all consider that a huge win. The only thing I really wanted to clarify was on page six of your presentation. I just wanted to verify this low-income enrollment statistic that the state now has. So it's not 185% of the federal poverty level, but now it's, or that's what it's being changed to. So we can get it up and verify that.
Yeah, number six.
Oh, yeah.
It's going through that.
Yeah, I can pop it back up. I'll put it back up in one second, Mr. Morgan.
I guess without putting up, was there any big changes from the designation of low-income students that you guys, that stood out to you that's going to negatively impact Fitchburg? Are these bullet points that are listed out here? Were these already in practice?
Yeah, I think for us, I don't want to say it was kind of already baked in the cake, so to speak. We're now, as Mr. Roach mentioned, there is 12 different categories based on a community's, whatever, economically disadvantaged, you know, criteria. Fitchburg is in 11 of 12. And as you saw from the other slide, you know, Lawrence was to the left of us in terms of more state aid. Just in comparison, as I say, compare and contrast, our sister city to the east is now in category 10. So I think what's happening locally and statewide and probably nationally is, unfortunately, there are more low-income students attending... there are more low-income students attending schools nationally. And with the Student Opportunity Act funding, as Mr. Roach mentioned, just based on the economically disadvantaged classification, I think it's 30 million or 31 million, so it's what, 31% of the 96, 97 million, is there to, again, not only address the academics, the social-emotional learning, but also to provide our students opportunities. So that, those opportunities are extracurricular, could be athletics, it could be arts. You know, many years ago, we were trying to maintain some of these programs, and we weren't in a position to actually add any staff. We were almost annually laying off staff. So really, when either school committee or the public looks at Fitchburg, at least for the next, well, I'll say four years now, because next year is year three, hopeful that the Commonwealth continues to fulfill the mission of Student Opportunity Act, and again, with the staffing that hopefully, our biggest challenge would be finding the staff. As I think we spoke earlier, you know, with Ms. Fabali, not only Fitchburg is finding the staff to meet the needs.
So that classification that you shared with us last week or two weeks before, that represented this new designation of low-income students. And these different bullet points that you have at the bottom of whether they're participating in state public assistance programs, that category 11, that total percentage that was used there was representative of all these, this new classification, this new designation of low-income?
It's a significant benefit to our school system.
Right.
So the state used to use, they used at one point, low-income.
Right.
They shifted to economically disadvantaged, which just like Tara did before, I'll just use a round number. So if your percentage was 50 at low-income, economically disadvantaged, all of a sudden made it 35. So it lowered the percentage for the district, though the reality was, you still had 50% of your students who were low-income. So that actually hurt schools. In my view, as a principal, I found that to be not positive. And it's not like you want a higher number necessarily, but at the same time, you want what the higher number can give to your kids and your staffs and your schools and the capital improvements and all that type of thing that we need to do. So going back to low-income has actually then brought us back to where we were, which was somewhere in the 70%, 78 technically, which is a big advantage to our foundation budget. The reason we're at 96 million, 30% of it has to do with the fact that we have, you know, a high-low income percentage. And again, it isn't a negative thing, it isn't a positive thing. It is a thing. And this allows us to obtain the kind of resources that our kids and our staff and our families need. So I see it as a huge positive for the way that we can now calculate this budget moving forward and invest it in those types of things that we know our kids and everybody need in the Fitchburg Public Schools.
Agreed, yeah. It's a much more wholesome definition.
Definitely is. It's accurate.
Right. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to have that conversation, because I think that's really, you know, poignant to our district and really important. I think that's sort of a standout we should be paying attention to. But this is all great. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Couple grants to...
We're good. Okay, so I think, thank you for your questions, and more information to follow as we gather it. We have one grant to submit and two to accept.
Yeah, so you heard a lot about the grant to submit. It is the Chapter 74 After Dark Partnership Approval Application. That's due this Friday. That would be for the program that you heard with Mr. Brown between Monty Tech, Fitchburg Schools, Gardner, and Araganza. And then there are two to accept. That's the 21st Century Internship Grant for $60,000, in addition to the 21st Century Enhanced Programs for Special Education Students, and that is for $10,000.
I think with that, we're ready for action items.
Want to bundle, wish of the committee to bundle?
Just the two.
Just the two. 23-239, 20-240, 23-240. Have a motion to bundle?
Motion to bundle.
Why bundle if there's only two? It's two votes anyways.
I rescind my bundle comment. No bundling tonight.
All right, I'm sorry.
All right, 23-239, approve the superintendent's recommendation to submit the following grants, After Dark Grants, unknown.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and second to accept, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed is unanimous. Thank you. Next, 23-240, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the following grants, titled 21st Century Internship Grant, $60,000, 21st Century Enhanced Programs for Special Ed Students, $10,000.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made and second to accept, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. No need for executive session at this time.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
Second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
The air adjourned.